I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission. It's November 13th, 2025. Roll call, Mark, please.
Mr. Waldinger?
Here.
Ms. Corble?
Here.
Mr. Magrino?
Here.
Mr. Selepus?
Here.
Ms. Peters?
Here.
First order of business is the approval of minutes from the October 9th, 2025, meeting. Any comments on the minutes? If not, may have a motion.
I'll make a motion that the minutes be approved as written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll be taking public comment on items which are not on the agenda. So if you have a comment on one of the agenda items, now's not the time. But if it's something other than the items on the agenda, now's the time. And if you do come up, we ask that you state your name, your address, sign in, and then we may have to enact the five-minute time clock if we do get, start running along here. Any honest comments? Nope. Moving on to old business, we'll move to Juniper Woods Lot 200. Mark?
Yes, this is a plan that we've seen a few times before, so we're continuing that discussion. The plan is in the subdivision known as Juniper Woods Development. This was a development built, or actually approved, in 2019 and built shortly thereafter. The development itself consists of 30.4 acres of land and had 60 single-family lots subdivided within it. It also included 10.24 acres of open space, some of which was considered unusable, so it had 8.5 acres of usable open space within it. The plan also called for the creation of two new roads, Juniper Way and then Manor Way. Manor Way, which is actually an extension of an existing Manor Way and the adjoining Beacon Manor Plan. And so what we have before you is the Lot 200 subdivision, which is located in this green area here, which is the open space within the Juniper Woods Development Plan. So the development itself, just to orient everyone, this is the far corner of Juniper Woods, with Thompsonville being down at the bottom of your screen. And Manor Way is located right here, and that's where the lot is being proposed off of. That space right now is currently open space. It's roughly 2.8 acres, and they're proposing to take off .9 acres of that to be then considered a single-family lot. And access for the lot would be off of Manor Way. So in terms of zoning for the lot itself, just to look at the lot and that subdivision, it does meet the requirements from a dimensional standpoint in terms of setbacks and lot coverage. From a zoning analysis, when you look at it as a whole within the Juniper Woods Development Plan, it also meets those requirements as well. Most notably, the open space requirement still maintain, are still maintained above that 25% level, which is the minimum threshold for a development within that particular zoning district. So in terms of an analysis by staff, there's a handful of items that we note here. First off, one of the things that we'd like to see as staff moving forward is the actual plan itself, the entire Juniper Woods plan, to see where the open spaces are located. I showed you that graphic earlier. That was just based off of an old plan that I had created. And what we'd like to see within all those open space areas are which open space areas count for open space and which do not count towards that open space. For example, some of those open space areas contain stormwater management ponds, some contain easements. I know some of that land was subtracted out when doing the calculations. We're just having trouble tracking those calculations. In addition to that, then there's also the question of who has the right to basically approve, or not approve, but to subdivide this land. The owner right now is considered as the original developer, but at one time, this land was open space, was provided, was dedicated to the HOA before it was dedicated back to the developer. So there's questions as to the ownership, not necessarily the ownership, but the right to, I guess, subdivide the land. And lastly, one other item that's still outstanding is we're still having issues with Manor Way itself. There's some litigation about the continuation of that road into the adjoining development. We're not sure when that will be solved. So for now, we're thinking that we need a temporary easement and potentially a temporary turnaround for any type of access to that particular lot off of Manor Way. So with all that said, right now, staff is recommending that PC look to make a recommendation of denial to council based on some of this information that we have. We're still not clear as to whether this can be further subdivided. So with that, I'd open it up to questions from Planning Commission. I should also note, Mr. Smith is here, legal counsel for the township, for questions regarding some of the legal matters around this site.
Any questions, Commissioner?
I have a question for the solicitor. What is your opinion?
Well, and I guess I see Keith Higgins here, too. I'm not sure, and with the board's approval, are you or Woody willing to explain how it is we got to this point as to his ownership of that open space? Is that okay, Leslie? Because I think that would assist. I want to make sure we have the factual background. Counsel, is this, you need a second? Are you good?
I'm good, and thank you, Tom. Fred Jug, I'm here on behalf of the developer, and I got a nice tour of the library and visited that door originally and then realized that the steps here. But Woody's ownership, or the developer's ownership, was as a result of a deed. That deed was recorded, actually, and I believe if you look back at the original plans, there was a requirement for a certain amount of open space. As I think your agenda reflects this evening, the developer has established that they have provided more than what was originally called for with the open space. When Woody's office had recorded that deed to the HOA, and I have those dates, but I want to say maybe originally in 2021?
Fred, I'm going to have him put the map up, in case, it's behind you, in case you need to refer to it.
Okay.
Are you oriented? Do you see Manor Way?
Yes.
Okay.
There was a deed that his office recorded erroneously, and then they came back after they realized that, and that deed was recorded back to the declarant in 2022.
But if I can stop you there, just for a second.
Sure.
My recollection, and I'm not sure how many of you were on the board, some of you may have been at the time, I think the site plan always depicted this as open space, the original open space that we see here today. And that, in fact, open space was then deeded into the HOA community, consistent with what we, what you recommended and what council approved. But go ahead, Fred, just, I, that's my recollection of the facts.
Right. Those conveyances, the two that I just referenced, both occurred prior to the turnover of the community, which, as I understand from the records that I looked at, did not occur until January of 2024. And so it's a declaration's position that this was during the time of declarant control. This was more than adequately compensated with the amount of the open space that there was. And the proposal is that this be subdivided for purposes of one single-family home. Correct?
That is correct.
And to Attorney Peters' question to me, one of the issues, two of the issues that we have, one is under the Plant Communities Act as to regardless of the HOA owners, or being run by the declarant at the time, based on our rough math as to the number of lots that were sold, you may have fallen into a category where you needed, under 5318, 80% vote of the community to divest yourself of open space, meaning that it wasn't necessarily the HOA board's decision to vote on transferring the open space, but it was the membership as a whole needed to put to a vote to them. Because under that statute, if that's true, the statute says if you don't follow that, that any transfers are void. And so the question the township has as to whether that's an issue between the HOA and the developer, or whether the township should weigh in on that side?
As to what's on your agenda this evening, which is, I understand, is a request for subdivision. And as you well know, the issue there is whether or not the requirements of the sale to the subdivision and land development ordinance have been satisfied. As I understand, Mr. Keith Higgins has been in communications with your planning department. There have been a number of comments that were received, and each of those comments, to my understanding, and Mr. Higgins can address them further, they've all been addressed. So based on that, this is an issue which requires the Planning Commission to recommend approval since the ordinances are satisfied. The reality of it is that if the HOA, and I had heard from an attorney, I'm not sure if Dean is here this evening, who might have been representing, Dean Falavalido, might have been representing some of the owners.
You mean some of the HOA members?
Within the HOA. And certainly if he is, or continues in that capacity, or if the HOA themselves believe there's an issue, Woody's intention is to construct a home that's consistent with the other homes in the community, to maintain the requisite amount of open space and to provide the owners what they had anticipated when they moved into the Homeowners Association. If that is an issue, and to answer your question directly, Mr. Smith, clearly it appears that is an issue by, between the developer and the homeowners association, rather than an issue for the Planning Commission, which is just tasked with review of whether or not the requirements of the subdivision and land development ordinance are satisfied.
Here's the other, the other point to that, Mr. Jug.
Sure.
When the, when the property was transferred back by deed, there was never a site plan modification. So as we see it, the declarant or the developer owns open space, and you're asking the Planning Commission to recommend a subdivision of open space, which will have no real legal effect for your ability to build on the lot. It's just going to be open space in two parcels versus one big parcel.
Correct.
And I'm not sure that the right route wouldn't have been to come back and ask this board to modify, at least at the same time, to modify the site plan such that you could then subdivide. You know, because otherwise, we're creating a lot line that still is open space, that you can't build on.
Right. And I think it always makes sense to address those things upfront. And if the Planning Commission, not sure exactly where we are, because these plans, I know the original review letter was dated July 25th, so they've been around for some time. Obviously, Woody is willing to extend the time period. No one's going to get into a deemed approval argument at this point.
Well, those were the questions I saw with it. I know, ma'am, you had a question.
Yeah, what I'm trying to figure, too, though, is one of the questions, though, is not whether we're here just to decide whether it meets requirements. We have to ensure that the right person has standing to bring that request. Isn't that one of the things that we don't have clear determination? Because it's my understanding, isn't this development completely built out as is right now?
Yes.
And isn't it, all the housing is occupied?
Yes.
So wouldn't it have met the percentages where you would turn over everything to the HOA?
Well, everything was turned over to the HOA even prior to going back to the declarant. And I think what, what they're, so all the common area at one point along the way, after it was built out, and before there was complete ownership, was turned over.
Right.
What they're saying is because they still had declarant control of the board, the declarant had the ability, as the HOA board, to transfer it back to himself as declarant.
So that was a self-act that was done? That was, that was?
Whether that's in furtherance of the HOA, consistent with the declaration, the question Mr. Jug has phrased to us collectively is whether that is an argument between the declarant and the HOA versus the township.
But it does go back to a standing, that question, right?
I raise standing because, not from the HOA declaration, but from the statute. It says, if you don't follow this procedure, statutorily, it's void. And as to whether we read it as void, then we would say there's no standing here because we're not recognizing the transfer.
Right.
Now, I'm sure Mr. Jug's ready to push back and say he's got a deed that says otherwise, that he's the record, that his client's the record owner. So we don't have case law that really, from a municipal standpoint. But even if we, if we were to entertain and say we're not going to get into the standing side and recognize standing, my other concern is equally, can we let somebody subdivide open space? Because then it comes back to because it's open space, is it still, even it's in his name, does the HOA still have a right to it because you've not modified the site plan through you? So if we could add more legal intrigue to, to this little plan, that's kind of where I find the holes here. And I think why Mark and his group recommended not to approve it because of these, these issues that are up in the air, at least. But again, Mr. Jug's obviously, you know, can explain his way around and see if we can legally make this work.
Because just as a real quick follow-up, just to make sure I fully understand, too. And what we also have here is we have an approved plan with the approved, with the open space, even if it is an excess, approved with that.
It's still open space, right? Right now, it's open space owned by the declarant. Normally, what we would have had at that time is probably coming back to you and say, hey, modify this. I don't need this open space. I have control. Make this a new lot. And it didn't happen. So when he deeded it to himself, he only deeded open space. As to ownership, under the declaration, open space is owned by the HOA, albeit deeded to the declarant.
But then you have, then there is a question about going into what the intent of the HOA is and what the language is and in whose interests.
Right, and so that-
That HOA's, the request is, the question is, in whose interest is that? Is this modification pursuant to the HOA, right?
Right, and so my, if this was just a pure legal issue, I would advise you that they can't do it. That would be my opinion. The hang-up for me on the HOA fight is whether, because there's no case law on this, whether we're to read the statute as void, or whether the HOA is supposed to read the statute as a void transfer and enforce their rights.
You're talking about a chicken or the egg?
Yeah, so is the township entrusted with enforcing the declaration and the HOA member, declarant and the HOA members, this land transfer?
But it did have to be, have to be approved, and it was part of the approval process, right?
Right, but it also, because the statute said if you don't follow this route, it's void, but we are not a court of law either. So, you know, there's been no judicial finding of void. And so again, putting that aside, if we could jump that hurdle, I still have an issue that I think a site plan modification at least has to accompany this simultaneously with you, if not before.
Because this was under the conservation residential overlay,
Correct, yes.
which took into consideration the design, the layout, you know, the lot sizes, the open space, the configuration, the amenities, that was looked on en masse, as a whole, as a plan. And now we're simply looking at a small piece and saying, let us subdivide that out and be two pieces of open space, which we understand the intent, but that's where I think I have the hardest time wrapping my head around this process as we sit here today.
Rocker, you're saying that it's about more than whether there is more than enough, whether the open space requirement is still met even if another lot is created?
Correct. Absent of the math, there's a question as to this was, this plan, the layout, the design, the configuration, the grading, the stormwater, everything that makes up Juniper Woods as a whole was taken into consideration when this plan was reviewed and approved by the various planning bodies and council at that time. We're now kind of just jumping into the middle of it and trying to pull out a lot, which is not the appropriate process from what I would think.
Yeah, it's definitely, you know, it's definitely tricky in terms of what's going on here. Because the other concern I have is that if you approve and council approves this subdivision, they have to come back for a site plan modification because they're still stuck with open space, right? And I don't want the argument to be that we would have never subdivided if we didn't prejudge that this was going to be used and that we have to vacate the open space. Otherwise, we would have never subdivided it out.
You're concerned with waiver arguments, then?
Yeah. Or at least a stop for us.
And we agree with the site plan route that prior to any construction of a home, that would be required to address the standing issue which one of the members of the Planning Commission raised. My understanding, and I looked at this, the county records confirm that ownership is with the declarant, and that would be our response as to, we are the record owners. As you know, Mr. Smith, it's not uncommon for common areas to be conveyed in an HOA by and through a quitclaim deed, and we're prepared to do that, but we have this issue to resolve. Looking at a solution, and rather than the developer digging their heels in and saying, well, we believe we're right and we're prepared to get into a land use appeal, or this dragging on and on, what we're really interested in, and if the attorney was here this evening, and I can certainly reach back out to the attorney who contacted me and confirm if he's still involved. If he is not involved, then whoever is working on behalf of the HOA, their board, the developer is interested in what is the issue of the HOA with this one additional home? And if this is something that can be resolved with the HOA to avoid the legal dispute that I've referenced, and this issue to be resolved for the Planning Commission before it goes to council, Woody is willing to do that. I would just need to know who the contact person for the HOA, and specifically, what issues do you guys have with this proposed single-family home?
And, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to ask, there seems to be at least one or two members here that may want to address those questions. I don't know from the HOA.
We'll definitely get into additional public comment, and if the applicant can finish with any presentation or elements you have further, Mr. Jug?
Yeah, it's, it's basically, the solicitors identified the issues that could be sticking points for members of the Planning Commission. The developer is not looking to hold the township to the time period to act under the MPC on this if it's only going to result in this ending up in some long-drawn-out dispute. The developer's willing to work with the residents to the extent they can share with us what the objections are, and is there a route to make this work prior to getting into that type of a battle, which would require the developer to consent to table and to ext, I'm also a municipal solicitor, to extend the time period for a determination to be made in this ultimately shipped to council. What I'm not sure of, because I expected that I would be hearing from this lawyer by the name of Dean, what the issues are, and is there some way in which the HOA would be satisfied for this one additional home to come in, and what would that take? Woody's willing to explore that. We just need to know if we're communicating with an attorney or with the HOA board directly.
We'll take public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone like to speak on this matter? Please come up, state your name, sign in, your address as well.
My name's Melissa Nupwoski. I'm at 116 Marble Drive. I did write something up. I apologize. It's before. I knew all your notes, so I'll try to address some of the things that he just brought up. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Melissa Nupwoski, and I live at 116 Marble Drive. At the last Planning Commission meeting on September 11th, I submitted a petition with 64 households in opposition of Lot 200 subdivision plan number one. Of the 64 households, 49 are within the .25 miles of the property in question. It is our understanding that the lot in question is part of an existing open space for Juniper Woods that is supposed to be in a land trust. Using this lot to build a house was never a part of the approved plan. In the original approved plan, the lot was designated as open space. According to the Peters Township Code, Section 440 dot dash 301, open space is defined as "an intentionally undeveloped lot of land used for agriculture, forestry, natural habitat, pedestrian corridors, and/or recreational purposes that is undivided and permanently protected from future development." Therefore, the request to subdivide and develop this designated and approved open space should be denied. In addition, your agenda states that Juniper Woods Development will be required open that has met the required amount of open space to move forward with this subdivision. At the September 11th Planning Commission meeting, it was disclosed that the open space calculation was from the developer only. I'm just asking if this has been verified. I know that you guys presented a little bit more information, but has this calculation been confirmed by an outside party? Juniper Woods does have stormwater management facilities, which include retention and detention basins. In Peters Township, detention basins and sewer lines do not count toward the required open space in residential developments. The zoning ordinances explicitly state that stormwater management areas and areas reserved for utility easements, including sanitary sewer easements, cannot be included in the calculation. We urge you to review and confirm the open space calculation is accurate. We also urge, then, review that all zoning, environmental, and land use codes to ensure this project is in compliance as this was considered wetlands. The open space in our community makes Peters Township special, and for some, it's the reason why we moved here. We have made significant investments in our homes, and your decision will impact our property values. The approved open space is a natural buffer between Juniper Woods and the surrounding neighborhoods. There are many technical difficulties with this location and this subdivision. I'm urging the Planning Commission to reject the proposed development plan for this one household. And please listen to the 64 households all in opposition. This development plan does not reflect the needs, values, or long-term interests of this community. As I stated at the last meeting, we are not against growth. We are against reckless, shoresighted development that places profit over people. In closing, I ask you, as stewards of this community's future, to prioritize sustainable growth, responsible use of land and planning, and the voices of the people who live here. Please vote against this development proposal. And to answer some of the questions that were just brought up, if you would like to know, one of the things is, is this was not part of the approved plan, and it is not your question of, it's, that you would just want to be in accordance with the residents of Juniper, and it's not consistent because the other members of the community, you just want to be part of this community and so forth. I have to say, of the 64 people that signed it, a lot of these people are from Juniper Woods, and they're very much against this. This is not part of the community. It is in a very awkward set aside behind the community. It is in the corner of the community. These people that are in the corner, they all paid extra for their lots to have a private wooded lot. They were told if they, they paid extra so that they could look out at woods. Now they're going to be behind, now what's behind them is another house. It was never part of the approved plan, and I, I don't even agree with the modification. Like you said, this was all planned out to be a community, to be spaced out, and, and this isn't what was approved upon. I know from where my house stands, I was promised this natural buffer, and you are going to remove that natural buffer, so. And I, I don't know if I've addressed everything, but there are, there are many reasons why many people do not want this. And what I submitted at the first meeting was a map, and you can see this, this house, and you can see every house around it, and all of the neighborhoods, and all of the surrounding communities that are against this. This is not a Juniper Woods thing. This is the neighborhood behind them, the neighborhood on the side of them, the neighborhood in front of them. They do not want this. This was the natural buffer between. This was what makes our house special. And I'm being robbed of that because one extra home would be squeezed into this lot when it was never part of the plan. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'll just point out, I did put an area of the area in question. Manor Way, or, well, not Manor, well, Manor Way is here. This lot is the proposed lot right here. And you can see the existing subdivision off of Marble Drive, as well as the Beacon Manor Plan over here.
So I think what she was concerned about is that home would sit behind those homes versus next to it.
Yes. So these homes signed the petition, they are against it, they paid extra money to have woods and to not have, to look at the house. I'm over here. This will be right up against my property line with an easement of, what was it? 20?
20 feet.
20 feet, which is, we have a 50-foot setback. They have a 20-foot setback in this plan. So you have all of this neighborhood, neighborhood here, and neighborhood here that are all against this lot being built. It's not just Juniper.
Any other public comment? Any other commissioner comments?
I'll make a motion. Go with that?
Yep.
Any mayors? I'll make a motion to recommend denial of the Juniper Woods Lot 200, request to subdivide an open space area for the addition of one additional lot.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Would there be any opportunity for comment before the vote? And that would just be to specifically ask if there is a section of the subdivision or land development ordinance that the planning department found that had not been satisfied with this submission?
I think we're just making a recommendation here?
No, understood, but-
And that's not really Mr. Smith's point here to identify the section that we're relying upon?
No.
And making our vote. I'm just trying to say, making our vote.
Understood, but for your consideration before the vote that you made, is there a section of the ordinance which the planning department or any professional who reviewed this on behalf of the township found was not satisfied?
So respectfully, we've already voted. So I think that at this point, we would move on to the next matter.
After the motion, there was not an opportunity for public comment?
I mean, they're providing you the back and forth now, Mr. Jug.
Right, and specifically, the question was whether there was anything identified in the subdivision and land development ordinance by the planning department, which was not found to have been satisfied.
But I do think there was commentary on that, and Mr. Smith gave a, in some of you. It's part of the back and forth. I would say one- made by staff as well as the comments by Mr. Smith, would be my response.
And that back and forth was involving the requirements or the language within the Uniform Plant and Community Act. My question was specific as to the subdivision and land development ordinance.
Right, but I'm not, we're not in a deposition, so I'm not going to respond to your question. I'm just answering your one as far as like what we're relying upon. So as part of making my motion that based upon everything that was heard today.
And I can't speak, Mr. Jug, for the board's vote, but what we told you before as to the SADO is that we don't believe that you could come in and subdivide an existing site plan under the SADO of open space without modifying the site plan. And I think that would be in violation of our SADO. We're not going to, there's no reason to have 30 subdivided open space lots. It doesn't do anything. It'd be inconsistent with the original site plan approval, doesn't allow it to be built upon, and that's not before Planning Commission.
Thank you. We've had a motion, it's been seconded, we haven't had a vote, so I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, our next order of business is Coughlin's Law Kitchen and Tap.
Let me get back into that presentation right here. Okay, so Coughlin's Law, this is another plan that's been before the board a couple of times. Just to kind of orient anyone who hasn't seen this plan before, this is located at 615 East McMurray. It's a one and a half acre lot. The lot is currently vacant, but it was used in the past as a medical office. It's a relatively flat, flat site, and access from the site is provided via East McMurray, which has direct frontage on that. It also has an approved HOP for the current driveway and the condition that it's in. So the proposed development for you is for a restaurant. It's approximately 6,600 square foot restaurant with 1,600 square feet of outdoor seating. They're proposing 74 total parking spaces. And again, as I noted before, vehicle access is going to be provided by the existing driveway. The one item I would like to note is that there's been considerable work done on the storm water management facility, which has been revised to meet our current requirements. Some other additional items to note, the lighting does now meet our current requirements, and in terms of cross-access between adjoining property owners, they have agreed to an easement located in the rear of the lot that would provide access between lots as those adjoiners redevelop. So at this time, the applicant has responded to all comments from both staff and the consultants. All the storm water issues have been worked through. Gateway has offered a letter which offered conditional approval for the site outside of needing some outside agencies like NPDS permits and requirements. And TPD has also reviewed it and said that they have no comments as well. So with that, staff is recommending approval of this plan, conditioned on these three comments here, most notably addressing a letter from Peters Township, a letter from Gateway, and then also we would ask that they enter into a land development improvement agreement. What that agreement states is that they will follow the plans as they are approved.
Has any progress been made on any of the items in these letters?
In the previous letters, yes, yes. All the storm water issues have been worked through. All the design issues relative to the site circulation have been worked through. So it's our intention that this plan should be approved.
Mark, could you just restate what the agreement was? The easement agreement for future?
Sure, so the future easement agreement is, it's in the rear of the property here, and you can best see it with this dash line here, basically dedicating this, not dedicating, but reserving this area for potential access into the adjoining property to the north or into the south, depending upon if those were to redevelop. So redevelopment would be basically something moves out and something gets rebuilt there, and that would trigger the interconnection. What that would allow is when that developer person comes in, they would then connect into that area of the site.
Anything with the back as far as future access to the event?
No, we did not address that, given the topography, there's quite a bit of a hill there.
The magistrate's office is in the rear.
Right, right.
Down.
Downhill, yes.
Our man, Commissioner, this is an approval. Before we take public comment, I know we've seen this several times. Is there any public comment on this application? Please come up. Does the commission want to talk to the applicant, or does the applicant have anything further you'd like to put forward? Please come up.
Good evening. Kim Gels from JR Gels and Associates. On the outside agencies, the NPDS permit is being currently reviewed, and we should hear within the next week or so. And then also, the planning module, the postcard exemption, has been already reviewed by DEP. It's minor comments, and that's been resubmitted. And we provided the utility letter, so we're getting into the home run here.
Any other commissioner comments?
Are the only thing that's any what you would include in this one, the 1, 2, and 3? There would need to be any recommendation?
Yes.
Or any improvement contingent upon those three?
Right, correct.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Planning Commission approve the Coughlin's Law, South Hill's Land Development Plan, subject to the three conditions. Address comments from the review letter dated November the 6th, address comments from the review letter dated October 31st, and the developer execute a land development improvement agreement, which requires the applicant to develop the site in conformance with the land development plan.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. That moves us on to new business, 3836 Washington Road.
This is a new plan before the commission. It is for a commercial development located at 3836 Washington. Let's get to my notes here. Real quickly, this site located, it's a 2.3 acre site that's commercially zoned. It's located at the intersection of Washington Road running north-south here, as well as Old Oak Lane, just off to the side here. And the current use of the site is vacant, but it is zoned general commercial, and the surrounding uses in the area are generally general commercial uses along the Washington Road corridor, and then outside of that, it's single-family homes as you move into the rear of the property. In terms of the zoning perspective, again, very similarly, general commercial around the properties along Washington, and then it's low-density residential otherwise. There are some site constraints related to this project. First and foremost, there's a utility line that runs right through the site that they worked on planning around. There's also a stream located on the one side of the site that included a floodplain that they were also working around. And there's a considerable slope to the site itself, rising from Old Oak Lane to the rear of the property. So the plans themselves, and before I actually get into the actual plans, I just want to point out, there was a variance associated with this project back in August of, or actually maybe even before then, of 2024. They submitted a variance request to construct a building further from the maximum building setback. The general commercial zoning district has a maximum setback requirement, meaning that you have to build your building only so far away from the road, which in this case, in this zoning district's 45 feet. However, the applicant assumed that, or intended that there was a hardship here in being that if you look at this site, again, this is Old Oak Lane, this is their proposed building, there's actually a stream that runs through here with a floodplain, meaning that if they were to build up to that maximum building setback line, they would actually be within the floodplain. So they requested a variance, which was denied by the zoning hearing board. However, in court, that decision was reversed and the variance was granted. And that set the stage for this development here that you see before us. It's largely unchanged with some minor details since the zoning hearing board is a commercial building proposed. The uses within it are retail and restaurants, and you can see here the different proposed uses right here, cafe, pastry shop, cigar wine bar, and a restaurant, and their respective square footages. It'll be roughly total 8,500 square foot building. Access to the site right now is going to primarily be off of Old Oak Lane, which is a local street, two lane, that leads up to Washington Road here. Or if you follow it around, probably about a mile or so north, it'll hook back up with Washington Road as well. One thing to note, they are proposing the ability to have a parcel interconnection with the site next to it. That site is, was the former, I believe, Med Express. I think there's a Chipotle in there. Regardless, it's a commercial development. That owner of that does not want to allow the connection, but this applicant has at least provided that their development is built right up to the property line at the correct elevation so that in the future, when that site redevelops, then that connection can be made. Storm water management is proposed to be handled via underground tanks and infiltration beds to the north, or well, actually, that's on the top above the building here and over on this side of the building. Parking, there's actually two levels of parking. As you come in off of Old Oak Lane, there was to your left a lower level of parking that actually is tucked in under the building itself. And then as you circle back around, there's actually a second level, what I call the upper level, which that will then provide direct access at the same level or elevation as the businesses themselves. They are proposing a buffer yard along the, let's say that's the western boundary there, mix of evergreens and shrubs. Also point out a number of walls, given the contours of the site itself. There are several walls proposed, I believe five in total, ranging into various of heights, some as high as I think, want to say 13 or 12, 13 feet. And they're also proposing lighting, which will be handled by three light standards throughout the site. However, there is no proposed spillover onto the adjoining properties. So at this time, they have worked, the applicant has worked to address many of our comments, whether it's my comments or some of our consultants' comments. However, we still have a number of comments that still remain. There is several comments from our engineer in relation to the designing construction of the walls themselves, and that's relative to the soil types that they're being built on, the proximity to utilities and storm water, and potential impacts to adjoining properties during construction. There's also some additional storm water calculations that the engineers are looking for. We've also highlighted some parking lot and driveway slope issues that need to be adjusted. The fire chief has expressed concerns with his ability to turn around fire trucks if there were ever an emergency at the site itself. Currently, there's no way to turn fire trucks around. And one of the suggestions he did have, though, of course, was making that interconnection with the adjoining property as well as sprinklering the building. We also have found some discrepancies between the architectural and civil drawings. This is really nothing that's uncommon. A lot of times, these drawings are being done by different people. They change over time, and they don't necessarily always coincide, but we do need to get those to be consistent. And also, we need a little bit more information regarding some of the uses that are being proposed. For example, we don't have anything in our code book that's called a cigar and wine bar. So how do we calculate parking for that, or even when it comes to some of the parking generation requirements? So we need to work with the developer on that to determine what exactly, based on how it operates, what exactly we will then consider it as. So with that, what we're recommending is that we table the plan until we can get more additional information and possibly meet with the developer themselves to go over some of these comments and see if there's any type of resolution that we've come to.
Have you spoken to Mud, Mr. Mudry, I just want to call him Mudry, about the use in the trip generation? What he would recommend, he look at?
He's recommending to, he's considering this a restaurant, but when we first met, we were actually considering it a, I think it was a, I forget the term, it might have been a brewery, something to that effect.
Okay.
I think we're somewhere in between, so we're just working our way through that. They have two different parking requirements. One's at 1 per 200, the other one's at 1 per 75 square feet. So we need to figure out exactly where we lie within that.
Where does the developer think they fall?
Well, the developer initially, I believe, went with the 1 per 75 calculation, and then in talking with Mike, they bumped it up to 1 per 200. I'm not necessarily in agreement with that, so that's why I want to sit down with the developer to figure out exactly what's going on.
Okay.
Do we have someone from the applicant? Sir?
Hello, Board. My name's Sean Adell. I'm an engineer with the applicant. The applicant's also here tonight. As far as tabling the plan, I'd agree that makes sense. You know, in the coming week, I plan to meet with township staff and engineers, assuming we can all get together just to kind of hammer out the remaining comments. But Mark did suggest we come here tonight, so we wanted to come, give you guys an opportunity to take a look at the plan, give us any comments as, there's a few things to address. We'll be revising the plan, so if you guys have any, anything you want us to consider as we're revising those plans to accommodate the township, that's really the kind of feedback we'd like to hear from you guys tonight.
Is there an issue with the parking lot and the car headlights relative to the neighboring residences that are behind there? Are we going to be shining lights on their homes and their yards?
Sure, so Route 19's running right here, and Old Oak Road goes downhill. And what we're proposing is to connect down here at Old Oak and come back uphill. So at this location, the parking area is lower than what's over here. Same situation here. So basically, it's almost tiered. So here's the highest elevation point, and then a wall comes down, and there's this parking area, and then there's another retaining wall. So elevation-wise, light shouldn't be an issue, and this residential area is also buffered. And my thought and belief is just those trees on their own is enough to buffer the lights. It's evergreen bushes and trees, they're basically right next to each other, so those should screen, and on top of that, the topography also will eliminate light shining that way.
How far from the property, from the residential properties would the parking lot be? I understand there's an elevation change, and I'd also like to know what the elevation change is, but the distance between parking cars, people, and I guess relative to the hours of operation?
Trying to read what that scale is, I'm going to give you an idea, but there's the property over here, which parking-wise, cars coming out is still being screened by these trees, and then the other properties up here, which you also have the trees and the topography difference. I don't know what that exact distance is, but...
I think that'd be wise to understand the screening from a headlight perspective, especially you're adjacent to a residential, you know, area. If you could provide some more detail on that the next time you're here.
Definitely.
So Old Oak goes downhill from Route 19, and you're saying you propose to hook up with that and then go back uphill. Will it be back uphill level with Route 19?
Eventually. Actually, it comes up a bit above 19 in this area because where the Chipotle is, if you think coming up there, that there's a bit of a grade you go up on there, so.
So the reason I ask that, you mentioned that the adjoining properties are above where this would be, but are they that far above if we're equal width or close to 19? Just trying to understand what this would look like and how the light would kind of transfer from one of the other.
If I recall, this is a bowl. Are you going to fill?
Correct. So there's, I believe there is an amount of fill. I have it on the plans, I printed it out over there, but it was turned in with our earthwork plans.
Do you want to walk us through your site design and some of your constraints so we can understand what you had to contend with here?
Yeah, of course. So down here is the center line of the stream, and the stream comes over here. So the first offset was how do we access the site? Between Old Oak and this entrance would be almost an ideal location. However, with that being a state road, Pendog will not allow a driveway a certain distance between an existing driveway and also an intersection, which basically knocked any access directly off of 19 out. So that led us to Old Oak. As far as site distance goes for bringing a driveway off of Old Oak, as far down along the property provides the greatest site distance and safest way for vehicles to turn in and out without a... way for vehicles to turn in and out without causing any potential issues. So with the stream, there's also a floodway that goes with it. We worked with DEP to determine what that floodway actually is, since this isn't a FEMA-studied area. So we worked with DEP to delineate the floodway, which is shown in this blue area. And on top of that, we have sanitary sewer coming in, coming in this area. So our building needed to be basically outside of the stream, outside of the sanitary sewer easement, which is kind of where we landed on the placement. And then, as far as the topography goes, just finding a way to actually make the site work, which is, you know, through a combination of retaining walls and just grading the site to match kind of what is existing while also considering the cross-access at the far end. So definitely a balancing act and juggling, trying to put together something that makes sense, follows all the township's ordinances, and also doesn't cause any issues in this area, so...
Your floodplain you're showing, that was an H&amp;H study that you did on the existing stream and delineated the floodway in that regard?
Correct.
Are you then exacerbating that through the culvert you're placing in the driveway? Does that change, or does that have any backup? Or is there any challenges that that's going to pose off-site?
No, the culvert's capable of flowing greater than the hundred-year storm event. That's also been permitted. The stormwater's been permitted with the Conservation District and DEP. The culvert pipe has. Really, the last approval we need to be able to begin construction is working through the township process.
Do you have a general MPDS or an individual?
It's a general MPDS.
And you had wetland mitigation by chance?
No, there was...
So a small wetland to the right of the entrance?
Yeah. Technically, there's two wetlands on site. And I say technically because it's very technical what was the wetland. So we worked with DEP. They agreed that one of those wetlands actually shouldn't be considered a wetland and is able to be removed. It was a sediment trap that was built. When the PNC and that area was developed, there was a sediment trap put on this site that just was allowed to sit for too long, and some hydro soils got into it. And so that's not actually, rather than being under Chapter 105 designation, it's still under Chapter 102, which is stormwater rather than wetlands and waterways. So it got technical on that end. The other wetland, a portion of it is being taken up with the roadway, but it's such a de minimis portion that during the permitting, it was allowed to be constructed on.
What type of walls do we have? We'll start from, you know, the floodway as we kind of tier up the site. What's the first wall underneath the building? What kind of, what materiality is that wall? Let me get your paper.
Actually, I didn't print out the retaining wall drawings on me.
I happen to have them available if you'd like to take a look.
I guess my concern, my question is, we have infiltration behind the building. We have infiltration above these walls. Is that a concern? I know we have a global stability. I think that took into account a lot of that, those questions.
So it's a minimal amount of infiltration. It's not a significant amount. And that's basically just to provide some de-watering in the area and achieve, on the MPDS permit, the water quality aspects of stormwater design. As far as infiltration, that rate isn't being what's managed. You know, the stormwater isn't, we're going to set it here and let it all drain down. Most of it's being controlled via hydraulics and different piping to discharge it at the same rates as it was before construction. As far as its impacts with the walls, there's also a geotech engineer, traffic engineer, and a retaining wall structural engineer that the applicant had hired to work on this. So they're all aware of everything, and it's all been designed accordingly as far as them interacting. So the big thing is structurally with the geotech and the retain, the structural engineer, the infiltration in front of the wall isn't an issue. If the infiltration was directly behind the wall, it would be an issue. But that, the way the wall's designed, it has the geo-grid tiebacks, and as long as infiltration isn't in that area, they have no issues with the soils kind of being a little bit saturated in that area. So we have two stormwater systems. There's a larger one here, and then the smaller one here. Those geo-grid tiebacks end prior to that stormwater area, so...
I think you've had a chance to review all of Gateway's comments with relation to stormwater, retaining walls, constructability, correct?
Correct.
And those are things you intend to address in a formal way with revised designs, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I believe most of those comments have been satisfactorily addressed. There's a few, there's a few outstanding comments. Some of them aren't even, you know, ordinance requirements, but we do want to understand what their engineer's point of view is and accommodate the designs to, you know, we don't want to be here with comment letters and fighting as far as, does this comment apply? It's not part of your SADO. You know, we want to address everything, and, you know, the applicant wants this to be a nice development without any issues. So we do want to understand those comments and revise the design accordingly.
I think a meeting would be beneficial with the designer to review our comments as well as to possibly work through clarification of them.
I appreciate that, Scott.
Yeah. So I started talking with Mark this week, and hopefully, we can line up a meeting with, you know, all the engineers and staff sometime next week to kind of hammer everything out, come up with an understanding in order to revise the plans accordingly. So there's not so many comments next time we're here. But like I said, the big thing was, we just wanted to gather feedback, because we're going to be revising the plans accordingly. So any feedback you could give us, things to consider as far as adding some distances to the plan of those houses.
So to be clear, you are requesting to be tabled and granting an extension as needed, correct?
Sure. Yeah. If the MPC needs to be waived, I mean, of course, if you guys were willing to consider approval condition upon satisfying the comments, definitely be all for that.
I think we would review, after we hear public comment, we would weigh in on the application before us tonight.
Sure. And, yeah, if MPC timeline needs to be waived in order to accommodate tabling, that's fine. We do want to get through all the engineering comments, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Two more questions. Is any part of the wine bar, cigar bar, outside on the side of the residence, or is it all interior?
It's all interior.
Okay. What would the hours of operation be? I'm just wondering, people leaving at 2:00 a.m. on a Thursday night when people have to get up for work?
Yeah. I'd love to answer that, but I'm actually not sure what that is, but could definitely get it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think there might be questions about traffic and traffic studies and what qualifies and why maybe this doesn't qualify for certain studies. I think that might be helpful to get out before, for the public to understand what our ordinances require and what we, what we can require and what we can't require from that standpoint.
So the developer did do a traffic study. I know I noted in my letter that we did not, but no, there was a traffic study done. It was done, submitted to us a while back. Mr. Mudry has reviewed it. I hope we're actually on our second round of comments with that. There's also a parking generation study done as well. So we do have comments on that, and the comment letters are in the packets themselves. So we're working our way through that. Again, one of the issues I had was, what is the cigar wine bar classified as, and how much parking is, they're going to be planned, which also then means how many trips are going to be generated?
So that parking study is still kind of in flux right now because the opinions can't be, determinations can't be made until some of your questions are answered?
Yes. We need to get more information about the uses themselves, and then we'll make a determination as to what it should be. And to answer the question about the timeline, we do have enough time to get to the next meeting, but if we don't make a decision at the next meeting, we will need a time extension.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
From the applicant, Angela Porcher. It's a pleasure to be here. Mark, can you put on the other one and add the, so there was a couple issues as far as the site distance to property line. So obviously, this is the property line with the neighbors. We meet, this is the landscape buffer per the ordinance, here's township, which is about at least twenty-five feet. You can see the contours here. You're pulling up, so each one of these should reflect two feet, is that correct? So each one of these lines is a two-feet elevation here, where we're semi-flat here and then going up here. So we got, you know, obviously, the amount of landscaping or above whatever requirement is in municipality, as far as what was designed and would be given to the township. As far as you drive up into the property, there's very minimal, there was a question about filling it in. There's a very minimal amount of field required. It's less than four thousand cubic yards of material that needs to come into the site to develop this. So a lot of the time, you do the stone and everything else. I mean, it is, the stones are parked behind the walls and around the building. It's actually very minimal dirt that needs to come into the, and to develop this. From the foundation to, so at the low end of the wall here, below the, from the existing grade to the floor of the basement, which is the garage floor, I don't have the exact amount, but it's approximately four to five feet, which will be a colored concrete formed exterior. On this side will be open sections into the parking area, which we're proposing to put screening on. So it'll be concrete, colored concrete up to the first floor level. And then, so this here, at the second floor level, becomes ephesus. Then there's a lot of brick. The two sides, the fronts are brick. The stair towers are brick. We have windows in the stair towers. This front is all stone. It's the facade on the front. Trying to think what it, this wall, this retaining wall, this retaining wall to, and this retaining wall are proposed to be, are only have a square foot block that do have grid as part of there because they're all on field slopes. This wall and this wall are supposed to be Lanthas Magnum stone. They're the bigger large block, and they are, because they are in cut slopes. And I guess that's the gist of what I wanted to put here. In my opinion, we're requesting to build a building that is a permitted use in a designated area that was planned for the township for this type of use. And I think our community needs what we are offering to propose. There's nowhere to go to have the venues that we're proposing to have. And I think it would be a, I think most of the people that oppose this will find after it's built that it's an addition to the township, and I think they'll enjoy coming and using our facility.
If I were standing on Washington Road, Route 19, what would my line of sight see?
So if you're, so I believe from the one end of the property, my property, from Med Express, PNC, whatever you want to call it, to Old Oak, I believe Washington Road has a four-foot elevation difference in it, which is surprising. So it depends where you're standing on Washington Road.
Let's say I'm right in the middle.
If you're right in the middle, and I don't know the exact number, I'm speculating, because I don't know. But I would be thinking you would be looking, almost as if, almost as if you're at, no. At one time, we thought we were trying to do a rooftop facility here, and it would just be slightly above Route 19. It's a rooftop, thirteen feet up. So I still think you're, if you were standing on 19, you're going to be, you're going to be looking at the wall. You won't be looking down at it. You won't be looking up at it. You're going to be looking at the side of it.
Mark, was there, there's no requirement that Med Express permit connectivity?
Not at that time. So that's why we don't have the ability to go enforce that on them.
Because that would seem to be more ideal than...
Yes.
We actually, our original plan was not to tie it in and to have this section all lower, but the municipality was insisting upon having that interconnection, so we modified our plans to accommodate what the township requested.
What is the, what are requirements and the allowances for hours of operations, basically on what we know right now?
I don't think we have any restrictions on hours of operation.
So there's going to, our intent, and again, it's all family-oriented businesses, is what we're proposing. On this side is what's planned to be here is a salad, acai-type venue. In the center is my daughter, coffee shop, bakery-type venue. Of course, 19 would be a wine and cigar venue. So obviously, our thoughts are, this is going to be early morning, coffee, pastries. So probably 7:00 a.m. start, earliest quit. This is going to be mammy lunchtime, midday, you know, mid, or end of evening, you know, end of early evening. And then the wine and cigars is going to be the latest one to start. But again, when you go up and down 19 at 10:30 at night, there's nobody on the road. Is it because there's nothing in McMurray to do, or is it because the people in McMurray don't want to be out? I guess that's what we're going to figure out. Obviously, we're going to want to operate and accommodate our customers. I don't, we're not going to be a two o'clock in the morning type venue. I don't think the people here are looking for that.
Thank you.
So you would likely be somewhere in that 10:30 range, like you were saying?
10:30 closing range?
That range.
I would, I would want to accommodate, I would think most evenings, that's going to be accurate. Weekends, would, you know, somebody want to be there at midnight, possibly? Is there something, you know, to mind all, we're not looking to have bands outside that Blair and Music at 2:00 a.m. Absolutely not. You know, it's not going to, we're going to meet all noise restrictions and any, you know, any ordinances that are there. Obviously, we have to follow the law.
Sure. Thank you. We'll start on this side. Public comment? Please state your name, your address, public voting, ma'am?
There's no...
There's one random floor beneath you.
My name is Barbara Dixon. I own the property at 111 Old Oak Road, which is adjacent to the proposed building. Bought my house sixteen years ago because I, it felt like we were in the, like, out in the country, like, my property was like a park. And the aesthetic of that landscape, and it has now changed immensely, I come out in my side yard, and I see this great big steel pipe every time I drop my yard that has been put so he could put his machinery over there. Before any of you vote on this, I just want you to know, or want to ask you, how would you feel if you were right up against this property?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like her to go first, because she's the boss.
My name is John Dixon. I live at 111 Old Oak. And from the engineer talking, it wasn't what I was going to address, but it brought up some issues. There are lights to come off 19 to go into our house, because we're the first house. We have three bedroom windows facing that road. So even though we have trees, trees around us right now, in the winter time, they lose their leaves, even pine trees do. So the light's going to affect us, I don't know how you're going to come out of this parking lot where the lights aren't going to hit us. You know, the other issue is, the township came four years ago and redid the sewage system along Crick. When it rains now and we have a hard, hard rain and storm, the water rises up to the banks and in the back of the yard it does flood still to this day. If you're going to put asphalt parking lot up above, you're adding that much more water coming into that drainage system that's going to affect that property. Those are the two things that, that the engineer helped me understand, because what I was going to talk about was a safety hazard. When you're coming off 19, down Old Oak, and when I was coming home from work today, I had to sit for five minutes because there's a sign that says, "Do not block the intersection." Everybody blocks the intersection, there's never been a policeman there to ticket anybody from not doing that. So I sat there, I come down, it's an S-turn, you're going to have, now, I think you said 100 so cars, they're going to have that parking lot? 10 cars is going to be a problem trying to get up onto 19. And then you've got the few people that want to turn to the left on 19 and go north. There's not a sign that says, "No left turn." So it's going to cause a lot of accidents, it's going to cause a lot of congestion. So we can either go out to 19 that way, or we can go out the upper way, or we can go down Oak Road and go down on East McMurray. Why would you want your residents that have lived there almost all their lives to be in position by doing this? You know, now, none of us care if he puts a restaurant in, I mean, yeah, it's a nice thing, but that's not the place to do it. I mean, it's a small bowl, to put fill in there, if you went to South Serbain, when they put that big mall up there, this guy was the best engineer in the world, nothing was ever going to cave in, he knew what he was doing. Three years later, all the stores moved out because it caved in. And you're going to put rock in there and then throw a building right on top of that? It, it's not going to work. I'm not an engineer, I mean, I don't know, but, you know, I've seen it happen. But I was looking more for the safety aspect, and I've never seen a study, you know, if they even did one going on that road, because there's a lot of traffic from all the residents that live in that area. And I'd say there's probably 100, 200 residents that live in that area that travel on those three exits to get out. And like I said, even if you put 10 more, 20 more, and it's going to come right out above that, that sewer place to go up Old Oak to 19, it, it's going to be a problem. You know, so that's, that's my opinion.
I didn't think you can turn left off of Old Oak.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
You can.
It's ill-advised, but you can.
We'll take comment. Thank you, sir. Anyone else from this side?
My name's Brad Tadaro, I live on 216 Old Oak, further up the road. My comment, again, was going to piggyback off of his, talking about more or less the traffic that's going to be added to Old Oak Road. Let's say that thing gets built, most of the patrons are going to realize, I think sooner or later, it's much easier just to pull out on Old Oak and drive a mile up to the intersection where the National Tire Battery is, where that, where we, where we live up that way. Call it the straightaway, because right now everybody already speeds in that intersection, that stretch, anyway. My comment or opinion would be, if you're going to go ahead and build this and have the entrance on Old Oak, then I'm going to be selfish and ask for a speed bump and a stop sign where Red Oak comes out where I live to slow down the soon to be increased traffic. It's, they're already putting stop signs and speed bumps on the other roads in the area, so I would suggest we do the same if we're going to add more traffic to that area. The other comment would be, why can't we push the current property owners that have the businesses there to amend their deeds to allow for the right of way to not put so much traffic on the Old Oak, which is a residential road? Keep the business with the business. I, I don't know how much they've actually pushed to make that happen, or what could be done to satisfy the current property owners right there. It seems like that should be done more to keep the business with the business and not spill out into the residential area.
My understanding is that that's something the township can now enforce once redevelopment occurs, but that plan has been approved prior to that ordinance being enacted. So that opportunity won't exist until there's a redevelopment plan for that parcel.
All right, well, if we're going to bend rules, I feel like you can bend them a little further, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on this side? We're hearing a lot of traffic so far, so if it's something more than traffic, we'd be happy to hear it. Otherwise, I think we got the traffic note pretty loud and clear.
With all due respect, unless you live there, or if you've been on that road, you don't know about the traffic. I'd love another restaurant, cigar bar, wine bar, family friendly, no, I'll, you know, I don't think that was called for. If you know Route 19, and I urge all of you, between now and your next meeting, especially between 4 and 6, 4 and 7, or even between 7 and 9:00 in the morning. So let's go back towards the old Don Shaw Sanoco Gas Station, that's the first entrance to Old Oak Road. It's by Crossgate Realty. If you take that road and you never turn, you come pop back right up onto Route 19, a stone's throw from the traffic light for Donaldson's Crossroads. Correct, if you're following me? Old Oak parallels Route 19. The road that goes perpendicular, you've already done traffic commuting. Oakwood, you've put the signs up there, because it is a cut through for West McMurray Road. And we all know that West McMurray Road and East McMurray going to West McMurray, they need a little help, so it goes from West McMurray to Oakwood, then it holds Old Oak. Just go ask a dog walker, or a parent that has kids. I walk that entire area all the time. In the morning, Oakwood, it's salmon coming upstream to hit Old Oak. Then they make a left or a right, because they're alleviating West McMurray Road. We asked for the traffic calming. You did that, it's helped, but there's still people, they speed and everything else. This area that you're talking about, it is a bowl. If you go down that bowl, you come up around and you hit Route 19. At the same times, people are coming off 19, coming down, it is a traffic thing. It's horrible. I, I, if you were to go there and walk there and see this area that they're, you know what? Gosh, Mr. Developer, go develop. There's a lot of places in Peters Township. You are like taking an area that's convoluted by everything, and you are putting it on a residential road, the only way in and out. If you had another in and way out, okay, maybe. So what I'm trying to say to you is, Old Oak parallels Route 19. Oakwood goes like this, he is trying to put this in this bowl. And if you have ever gone through, someone said 10 cars? I don't think, when they pull out, you could even have six cars sitting there. It is going to be so convoluted, and I'm, and all I'm saying to you, just go drive it and look at it. When you look at that curve on paper, it looks like, oh, it's a nice round bend. It is not a nice round bend. Old Oak from the northern end comes down, it goes down to where they're talking, and you know what? There's cattails on that side, so it is wetland. This side is where that galvanized thing went, and right there is this little bridge that they just rebuilt. It's really, you know, two cars can go, but you better go slow, and then it wraps right up onto Route 19. And right there is Donaldson's Crossroads. I'm just telling you, it is the most convoluted area. So what I'm trying to tell you also, and traffic, sir, is a big deal.
We understand that.
Okay, well, then you need to go drive that, and when you see where they're trying to stick this thing, you know, the traffic lights, oh, maybe the parking lights, they're going to see some headlights? Oh my gosh, we're missing the safety, the traffic ramification. And like I said, once again, Old Oak, and here's Oakwood, the cut through.
Sir, when a, when a development comes into the township?
May I finish? Here's Old Oak that parallels Route 19. Old Oak has already been established as a cut through for West McMurray Road, and we live with that. And we're okay with that, because we know that you need to relieve some congestion. My point is, it's a cut through. What you're going to do now is make Old Oak and Oakwood a destination for this place, because it's the only in and out. And you know what, if you have a restaurant, you have a wine bar, you have all those other things they're going to have there, and people are trying to come in, go into that little bowl. This is not this big sprawling turn like on, what, Bebout Road and Sugar Camp? You made the circle and you have the room? This really is a traffic problem. And I'm just trying to be honest with you, I urge you to go see this bowl. Because on paper, like, is, you know, like the big arc, it looks really good on paper, but it's not. It goes down the road, it curves up like this, and it's all residential. It's when...
I understand there's an alignment there.
I can't stress this enough, if you were to walk it, if you were to see it, to even imagine, about the only thing I could think that could go back there, maybe somebody wants a residential home back there, and they can access to it.
Sir, I think you've made your point, and now you're starting to repeat, so...
But I need to.
Others may have comments, and we want to give them the opportunity.
I understand that, I understand that, but you're look, I just want you all to, rather than looking on a piece of paper, to go look at where you want to have this. Peters, you know what, I've been here for 50 years. Okay, tally ho, Murphy's Mart, the Crest Theater, I get it, we need to build, we want new stuff. But it, there's a point in time when you are trying to put 10 gallons in a five gallon bucket, and it doesn't work in that area. Thank you very much, I appreciate you all.
Thank you. We've had a lot of testimony and public comment on the traffic. So let me just try to identify some of how the traffic process goes through this township. There are certain developments that reach thresholds that require a traffic study, right? And through that process, the applicant's engineer will put together counts and models for this type of use and traffic projections. That is then reviewed by the township's engineer. And through that process, and in this case, I'm not sure if Pendout would be involved, but through that process, we can approve or not approve the traffic study with improvements. So my understanding is that there has been a traffic study completed for this project, and there is commentary on it, right, from our experts, from our engineers. So that process to address the traffic, no one on this commission is interested in putting an unsafe condition within the township. We need to rely on our experts and tells what the engineering says in relation to any type of traffic. So if there is additional comments on traffic, I think we've covered that. If there's comments on other things than traffic, I'm happy to hear those. So I'm going to go to the middle now, I'm sorry, this sir on the right here, anything else that's not traffic related?
Yes, sir. My name's Richard, we all see, I live at 114 Moore Drive. Okay, so my wife and I just purchased our home on Moore Drive in July. Married just over a year ago, very excited to join the Peters Township community, we're both from different areas. We only learned about this commercial building development in early September, shortly after we moved into the house from a letter sent to us by Mr. Holdren. We're disappointed that the variance to exceed the maximum setback by a large distance, exceeding the standard 45 foot setback by 41 feet was granted, as it now places the multi-tenant building directly next to and direct site of our new property. With that in mind, regardless of how the new development progresses, our short and long-term plans are to always be good neighbors. Some key points to this, to mention or discuss, this is just to my knowledge, because we're so new there. We're the only neighbor whose property abuts this commercial development for both the developer's entire property line and ours, as far as I know. Since the only entry point is on Old Oak Road, all traffic heading to the future three tenant building will run a hill parallel and extremely close to our property, seems within 25 feet or so. This unfortunately allows for noise pollution, air pollution, glaring lights from vehicles in the businesses, and most urgently, the ability of the patrons of the future businesses to possibly wander under, onto private property. They're saying there's going to be a bar there, somebody might want to go out and have a cigarette, either, or whatever, you never know. Request that we have for two reasonable conditions to be attached to the variance from our end. Both conditions are to be instituted at the expense of the developer and builder, 3836 Washington Road. One, a six foot opaque and solid fence should be erected along the entire length of both properties to assess, excuse me, assist as a physical barrier in relation to the second point raised above. And then appropriate landscaping consisting of plants, shrubs, and deciduous trees should be planted all along the mutual property line to assist in aesthetics as long as the, as long with the issues raised in the second point. Just like all the other people said, worried about, always worried about headlights, you know, pointing at the house, everything else. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the right? Seeing none from the center, not traffic related.
Yes, ma'am.
No, no traffic related. My name's Renee Bolander, I've lived in the house at 111 Old Oak Road for about 30 years now. My son grew up there. And I know I've complained in the past about the traffic, so I'm not going to bring that up.
Thank you.
But my big thing is, I'm very concerned, I've noticed over the years how many more families are moving in on that road and that area with small kids. My main concern is with that development coming in and the added more vehicles, the kids with the school buses. I know that a lot of the buses try to stay close to where the child, the child lives to make it safe for the kid. But when my child was going to school, I live at 211 Old Oak, which is on the very top of the hill. My son had to walk along Old Oak down to Red Oak to catch the school bus. With all the speeders, it was very scary, so I called the school district and complained about it and got the bus stop moved. So even the people up back of us on Red Oak, their kids came down through my backyard, onto my driveway, and caught the bus in my driveway, which I have no problem with. But my, that's my biggest thing, is I'm so worried about these kids, because there's more and more little ones moving into the area, which I'm sure you guys want families to be living here. I mean, it's great for the community, and I like seeing the kids, I have no issues with the kids. But I'm just really super worried about their safety, especially with a wine bar, drunk driving. I mean, it, it's very scary, and it is very hard to walk on our road. You, it's, I mean, I have a family, well, down by your house, Brad, walks every night. They got two dogs, they got a little boy, and they have the stroller. And I worry every night that they're out walking because of how people speed on that road. And we are a drag strip, up where I am is a total drag strip. People come up from that light, go on the gas, and just keep going all the way down to the stop sign. They don't care if you're pulling out of your driveway.
Is traffic again?
Well, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But, you know, but I am, I'm, I'm just worried about the safety of the, the kids, the adults walking, the older people walking, it, it's just very scary, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We hear traffic, traffic calming, I appreciate that, we will look at that, yes, sir. Anyone else from this center section?
Did you come with anything prepared or anything? But it looks to me from this map that Old Oak will not be continuous anymore? You can't drive from one end to the other?
Yes, you can.
Yes.
Yes, you can? Where does it come in, in the back?
I, I don't see, maybe I'm missing something.
This development accesses Old Oak, on the right-hand side of the plan, you'll see an entrance that enters into the site.
And so, so this property is not acquiring the intersection?
No, sir.
As their property? Okay. Well, my family moved here in 1960. Well, my family moved here in nineteen sixty-five. That's sixty years ago. And I know you don't like traffic comments, I'll make a real quick one. There's too much, too many cars in our neighborhood because the neighborhood's grown. Canonsburg's grown, South Point's grown, you know, Peters Township has grown. There's more cars than there, there's room for. And I think that that is a big, big issue with what you've got going on here.
Thank you, sir. It's not that I don't like traffic. We all came here in a car, most likely. I can appreciate your concerns, and I want to take that to the experts. We are hearing you, I think. So unless you have something from a traffic perspective that's not speeding, or queuing, or just the overall traffic generation, or how this is going to work, I'm happy to hear it. I don't want to give, give the impression we're not, but from that perspective, I think we've gathered enough information. Anyone else from the center? Left side. Yes, sir.
Well, council, you know, members of Peters Township, my name is Jason Attenucci. I live at one-two-one Old Oak Road. I moved there nineteen years ago now. I have quite a bit to show, I wish I could have presented to you, because this is what Old Oak Road looks like, right? It is a quiet, small, here, I'll even walk over and show you. It is a quiet street. This is looking down the street to where they want to put a bar, right? This is my house, it's right here. There's like four more houses down before the bar, okay? This is Old Oak Road. It's a beautiful, quiet street, okay? It was one of the original neighborhoods in Peters Township. It was built in the forties, right on the street, and actually just adjacent to where that tree line is, is where the trolley tracks used to run from the city of Pittsburgh into Washington, PA. All right? So it's a beautiful old neighborhood, it's Old Oak Road, right? So it's quite a bit that I want to talk about here, but I also like to talk a little bit about the map, because there was a couple of things that were, that were brought up here on this map, and your questions that you had about elevations and such. The gentleman that was speaking lives back here. I think he just purchased this house back here. The height from here, from, from here to the top of the wall that's proposed is six feet, and it goes up to about fifteen feet. What we didn't talk about today here was, was a discussion of a variance, right? One variance about the setback, the forty-some feet. Well, there's also two other variances set in place right now. The variance not to connect to the adjacent property that's being requested, and a variance of taking twenty-five feet back to eight feet across the entire back of the property. So now there's another variance here being asked. So there's three variances being done, in addition to the fourth variance that was done in twenty-twenty-two about building the walls and the type of wall that can be built here. So there's been quite a few things going on about this. So go ahead.
I'm not, can you explain the eight feet to twenty-five feet? I wasn't following.
So there's a, there's a, there's a setback of twenty-five feet required from, from the property edge to the adjacent property. They're requesting a variance of sixteen feet to take the eight-foot distance. This distance from here to the adjacent property is eight feet that they're proposing, okay? That's one.
No, sir. That is not incorrect.
Pardon me?
That is not correct for the plan I'm looking at here.
I have the variance right here, and the request for the variance, sir, and it was, give me just one second here.
Was this from twenty-twenty-two?
No, this is from this year. Right here. Four forty-five oh five B one. Buffer area A is a minimum of eight-point-five feet wide, a variance of sixteen-five-point-five feet is requested against the twenty-five-foot variance. Here it is in the document that was submitted, right here. I can take you back up to the actual document coming from the attorneys to the township.
I don't know that that variance is considered with this application.
There have been other variances applied for.
Okay.
But they have not been approved.
So that variance, I, I, I'm not familiar with this particular letter, but I understand only one variance has been approved for this property, and that's relative to the minimum front yard setback. So these other ones have not been granted.
These drawings require these variances to be granted before these drawings can be approved, because the, the variance for the back, this eight-foot, the variance of sixteen feet for the eight-foot distance from the, from the parking lot to the back property is only eight feet. That's what they're requesting. The drawings show it to be eight feet.
Just looking, it's an April fourth, twenty-twenty-four letter, which is why I'm, why I'm looking here.
Sure, that, if you could step back to the podium.
That's a little earlier.
The, I don't have a distance on this drawing, but if it scales correctly, parking spaces are about eight feet wide, and that is certainly wider than eight feet.
Okay. There's a variance in request for that that has not yet been granted, and per the drawings, that's it. It's been denied, so, so these existing drawings do not comply with the variance.
Just to be clear, there was an application put forward that multiple variances.
Correct.
Those variants, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, those variances were not, were denied?
Multiple, multiple variances.
Multiple variances.
Two, two variances were denied, one was approved, and there's also a modification to the subdivision of land development ordinance, which also was approved. That was done back in twenty-twenty-two for wall height.
For wall height.
For wall height.
So, so we're now looking at two variances that were approved, two variances that have not yet been approved, right?
Not.
That have been denied, including, well, what about the variance to not connect to the adjacent property, because that's still standing?
One moment. There would only, these plans must show compliance with the township code for the variances that were approved.
Okay.
Okay? So the, if these plans don't, then they would need to go through another separate process back through the ZBA, which is not what our township staff or engineers have identified through their view of these documents.
Okay.
So we believe today that the variances that were approved, that these documents comply with those variances and the single modification. Correct, Mark?
Correct. Okay, I would like to put in a request formally to, to reevaluate those and go through and look at that, because they're not. I went through the drawings, I went through everything, I see the variances, they're there. Addition to that, there was another variance that wasn't granted, which was to allow them not to connect to the commercial properties beside us. Now, he said it was difficult for him to do it, that, that, that the state was giving them difficulty on that. The driveway into the property here, which is a Med Express with a Chipotle beside it and a milkshake factory right here, actually starts right at the edge of the property.
Right, but I think, but just, I don't want to interrupt you, but that is what we're talking about, that, that we are requiring them to put it in so that if, if, so they have to set it up.
Okay.
So that if, that those neighboring properties, if at some point in some way we could require them to allow that connection, it would be there ready to go.
Okay.
So it's not a variance on, on their side that they're asking for. What he was saying was that they met our requirements, but even though there won't be a connection now.
Okay.
We're requiring them to set it up so there could be a connection in the future.
In the future.
If we as a township are allowed to require that neighboring property owner to connect. But what, what staff was saying is that right now, we don't have a legal authority or ability to do that at what point in time, but we're requiring them to set it up so if that were to happen in the future, we don't come back and say, crap, I wish we had required them to do it before. So it's not, so just, what, where it's in here, when you use the term variance, is that a, that's a legal requirement that is never before us? That's a whole separate entity?
There was a request, there was a request for a variance on the requirement to connect, and I don't know.
Because they didn't get that, is what we're saying. It was a pass that. So all we're saying is that that's, there's a lot of issues here, that's not one.
Okay, okay. So there is the ability that they could connect to additional residential, commercial properties on this side as well. There is a road that comes back in here behind there, and so we'll come back to that in just a moment. So there's one other piece I wanted to talk about, we talked about lights, right? So this is a lower parking lot here. We talked about everybody being uphill from here. Yes, this gentleman over here is uphill from here. Barb, the woman who spoke first, she sits downhill from there, directly downhill, coming down the way the road comes down. She went and go and looked at grading that's been done, because it's already been graded, even though it wasn't permitted yet. It's all been graded and built. So the lights go directly into her property. So let's go back now to a couple of other pieces about this.
We're not keeping time yet.
No, no, I know, I know, but I'll, I'll cover some stuff really quick for you, sir. And I'll, and I'll try to avoid traffic. I'll use it once, okay? I promise.
You don't have to.
So, so the property is appropriately zoned as general commercial, right? It is adjacent and abutted to by three additional properties that are considered low-density residential, okay? One of the gentlemen came up and spoke, the other one was Barb, she spoke. Per Peters Township Code, four forty zone part six, four forty-six hundred operating performance standards, a bar nightclub shall be located no less than three hundred feet from any residential zoning district, school, or academy. A bar nightclub's hours of operations and activities must be appropriately scheduled to protect the existing neighborhood from detrimental noise, disturbance, and interruptions. So the first part of that is, in the Petership, Peters Township Code as well, it says, "A bar nightclub is an establishment where the principal use is serving of alcoholic beverages by the drink to the general public," right? This is asking to have a wine bar. They've already been permitted, they have a, they have a permit for the alcohol to be served there, they, yes, they have, they, they've already got that, right? So they want to put a bar less than three hundred feet from residential properties, less than three hundred feet from homes, right? So I'm not sure how that applies. Secondary, the hours of operation in Peters Township, it basically is from seven AM to ten PM in a residential zone for noise variances, right? For noise issues. So can't really operate past ten PM, can it? If it's, if it's adjacent to residential property. Another piece in this as well is, I had some people talk about the, the distance from the building, from a building to a building, but in Peters Township, the distance of bar and nightclub residential zoning district is measured from the property boundary of the bar's lot to the boundary of the residential property. That's, that's also under Liquor Code forty-seven PS four-dash-four forty and four-dash-four thirty-two. So let's go beyond that next, right? So the address for this property is three-eight-three-six Washington Road, right? They said they wanted, the, the request was for the development of a multi-tenant commercial retail center, right? Featuring a thousand-square-foot property. Current tenants' mix proposed to be twenty-three-hundred pastry coffee shop, twenty-four-hundred restaurant, and thirty-four-hundred standalone wine cigar bar, right? So they're saying they're going to put a bar, not a bar restaurant, but a bar, and it's a larger bar than the restaurant or any of the other property. And the main problem for us here is that this comes out, even though the address is thirty-eight-three-six Washington Road, the sole ingress and egress is going to be onto Old Oak Road, right? So there is some concerns, right? I'm asking, what's your precedent for a commercial property being on nineteen or Washington Road with its sole egress and ingress being on a residential street? I can't find one. I'm looking, right? I've looked all around. I, I asked the board to look for and identify a property that is considered Washington Road where its sole egress and ingress is on a residential road, right? For a commercial business, let alone a bar. Okay? So that's one point. Let's go on to something else. So when we look at all the, all of this, and all the submissions and everything, they talk about burden to the developer on the property, right? I, I'm really, I'm hard-pressed to understand the burden on the developer, right? They're not able to build the structure they want, right? It's maybe additional cost for them to get access via nineteen, or come up with another method rather than coming on, off of Old Oak. But for Old Oak, right, it's a massive burden. You know, I'm sorry, I'm going to use traffic twice, sorry. There's going to be exponentially increasing traffic on the road, right? Right now, there's thirty-seven houses on Old Oak Road. Yes, we connect to other, other communities, there's thirty-seven houses. They're proposing sixty-four parking spaces at a minimum, and you were talking about necessity of being much more if it's considered a bar of some sort. That's more, that's more traffic on that than all the houses that are on the road.
Traffic related.
Yeah, it's traffic. I said I'm talking about two or three times, right? Then safety for the neighborhood. Traffic, one last time. Commercial traffic, right? If you're going to put a commercial business onto a residential road, and it's going to be running from seven AM till, what'd you say, twelve, one AM? When are the garbage trucks coming? When are deliveries coming? How are the deliveries coming? Where are they coming? They're coming through a residential road, not a commercial road, not down nineteen, no other way into the property. And these are going to be happening on off-hours, which is again going to create more noise and more issues for the surrounding property owners. I think, you know, all this, if you've gone there, if you know the neighborhood, if you've gone and actually looked at it, it's already irrevocably changed the character of the neighborhood, and it's going to continue to do so. I bought my house here nineteen years ago. It is idyllic. It was a park environment, right? It, it's, it's still a beautiful place. With the work that's already been done, we hear sounds that we never heard before. I never heard traffic from nineteen, I hear a lot of it now. If we're going to put a bar in, in other places there, it's going to have a detrimental impact on all the property values, not just on the adjacent properties, but all of us back there. So my question is, like, why do the preferences of one developer outweigh the rights of the entire neighborhood? Right? And that's the real question. And one last thing. I'm going to, I'm going to go back to the young lady who spoke first thing, she said, she said, "Why should reckless, short-sighted development that is for the profit of a developer, not for the best interests of the community?" And I'm hard-pressed to understand how this could provide best interest for the community. If we go and look at the bar restaurant that was proposed to be put on, on McMurray Road, that sits back off the road, that isn't adjacent to commercial properties, I'm all for that. If there was some way for them to come on and put a restaurant or bar there that isn't sitting abut or eight feet away from the, the next piece of property to it, I'm all for that. But I just don't see the reasoning behind this kind of development, and especially to put the ingress and egress solely on a residential road.
Thank you.
For many other purposes other than traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the left?
My name's Don Sedowski. I live at one, one-six Old Oak Road. Been living there thirty years. Now, the conditions on this property, if, if this is approved, there should be conditions for the hours, the bars open, where there is not going to be music outside for that, and there should be a fence around there, because it's, because his property is eight-foot, eight-foot from the line. And, and the garbage is a major problem. I live right beside the Volkswagen dealer. Three o'clock in the morning, they get their garbage emptied. And now, it's going to be down there next to Barb, and, and we're going to hear it down in the hole. Anything goes down that hole, we hear. So is it time now for the conditions on, on this property? Before it's approved, or after it's approved, you get the conditions?
We will evaluate the concerns, and if there is a motion tonight that includes additional conditions, that's when that would come forward.
And my other question is, when was this traffic study made? Three years ago when COVID was on, on the road?
On a Sunday.
No, it's asked, a traffic study has to be done within a certain amount of time prior to the development, so that we don't, you know, look too far in the past. And there are certain hours in which the traffic study has to be conducted per the code. So these aren't things that this, this commission up here is making a decision based upon our preferences.
I know that.
And our wishes and desires. This is something where we're trying to administer the business of the township in accordance with our code. So this isn't where we can simply, you know, tell the developer what color to paint his building. That's not within our purview.
I'm not out.
There's certain things we can do and certain things we cannot.
Yeah.
We can certainly hear your concerns, and we can certainly relay them to staff to make sure that we can do the best to have those attenuated.
And then, because the condition, nobody addressed how they're going to get off of nineteen. Is there only going to be a one-way coming in? Because if somebody's going northbound and wants to turn in to go into the restaurant, they're going to have to block traffic.
That'd be in the traffic study, sir. Typically, if a traffic study has improvements or mitigations, that's something that's taken into consideration. In this instance, PennDOT would be involved, so it would be a much more exacerbate, much more intense review, especially if you're going to change the intersection at Old Oak and nineteen. So that's not something that we've seen as far as a mitigation, but I can't say that's on or off the table depending on the use of the traffic generation.
And that big pipe that Barb was talking about, that's, that's the pipe he put in for the bypass for the crick coming down it, for the wetlands. Everybody keeps on referring to.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from this side of the room?
I have one quick thing.
State your name, sir.
My name is Justin Robinson. I'm at 117 Old Oak. When the traffic study was done, it was in the summertime on a weekday at 2:00. Do the traffic study either at 7:00 AM when there's full traffic or at 5:00 PM when you're going to have a bar restaurant. Do it at appropriate times so we can actually see what time and how busy that traffic is.
I think the PM peak is between 4:00 and 6:00 that we would need to study so that there was no 2:00 traffic time. There's no, there's no 2:00 range. The PM peak for weekdays between 4:00 and 6:00. So that's the data that has to be collected and used in a traffic study, the same on the weekdays, or the weekends, excuse me.
Light drove by.
No, we watched it happen.
I don't doubt they were collecting, but they have to collect the day and then the average daily trips and then the peak hour trips. So there's, it's much more complex than simply-
Just never saw somebody at night, do you?
They were there one day for three hours at like 2:00 in the afternoon. We all observed it. We all were emailing each other about it. We've been watching for it because we wanted to see it happen.
Are the traffic studies available for public review?
He was standing right.
Are traffic studies available for public review?
I'd have to check for their right to know, officer, but it's-
So again, there's nothing up here we're trying to circumvent. We're trying to make sure that the public understands-
Yeah, that's all.
-what the requirements are.
I just know what my family went through with traffic studies and everything else, so-
Exactly. So you're well aware.
I'm well aware of it. And when ours happened, it was during COVID and there was nobody on the road, so boom, low speed. But I just want to make sure it's properly done, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else like to not talk about traffic? I understand it's a big concern. This commission understands it's a big concern. We're not glossing over it. We trust in our experts, we trust in our engineers, and that's where we're going to lay this burden of analyzing the traffic. So our engineers review what the applicant puts together and they provide commentary.
Can I make one more comment?
Please come up, sir. One more.
Yes, again, my name is Jason Attenucci. I live at 121 Old Oak Road.
Thank you, Jason.
We have seen this project going on for quite some time now. Things are done that are not permitted, things are done that are not approved, and then they go back after the fact. There was areas of the township sidewalk, the township curb that was cut out and put in to enable it to actually be used, wasn't approved by the township. There was clearing and work done on adjacent properties that were not approved by the property owners at that time. And that was gained afterwards, after, I believe, there was litigation involved in it. So we've been consistently watching this developer do things that were not approved in hopes that eventually we'll get it approved. Well, I already spent this money. Well, they put, not just the call word in, but they started putting in sewage water runoff. They started putting things in. They don't have approval for this, but they're developing the land anyhow, right?
Is there a grading permit?
There is a grading permit, yes.
Was it full grading permit? Okay.
And they have approval from the state right now.
Okay. For one creek. I've actually contacted the DEP because there is a secondary zone here. This little teeny stream that comes down here is teeny. It's about an eighth of the size of the one that runs through here. And all this runoff and everything is affecting this. And once you look at this stream, because I'm actually contacting the DEP about this because this is a wetland, this stream runs back across and it probably crosses 20 properties, right? It goes behind a bunch of houses. If you go down Oakwood and you look at some of the other properties, people have bridges over this because that stream goes through their yard. And there's going to be downstream impact of additional water coming in from all that paving that's being done. Because where are they dumping it? They're not dumping it into the sewer, into the drains. Are they into sewage? They're going to be putting it into the runoff into the creek.
There's a stormwater management component to that that's a requirement not only by the state, but by the township. We have gateway engineers-
I understand that, sir. And we've seen so many times where things happen, like the gentleman talked about in South Surban where there was approval to build the wall and all the drawings were done and all the studies were done and everything was done. And two years later, the wall's falling down and all the property moved out. Our concerns are that things are being done, you know, ahead of being approved. Things are being done just to, you know, to say, well, it's already done. And we've been watching this happen time after, it is happening, all right? You can find out and ask about whether or not they cut a curb out and build a curb themselves. You can find out whether or not they cut additional people's properties, trees down on their property and cleared out to open a line of sight so that they could actually go through and get a line of sight for that road. And they did it without the approval of other people and then asked for forgiveness after the fact. And that's what seems to be occurring here and it's setting a bad precedent.
I would agree if that's setting a bad precedent. We will look into that. I did have one question. I did have one, sir, thank you. Did have one question that was brought up regarding to the bar use and nightclub use being a distance away from residential properties. Have we looked at that?
That is a requirement in our ordinance and depending on what this gets defined as, that's, could be in effect.
So it is something that you're aware of and it's part of the secondary discussions that you're talking about-
Correct.
-that means for the tabling and the recommendations that have been tabled.
Right.
So you can look into more things and have some definitive determinations going forward.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Lori Hino, 113 Alexander Drive. I know it was on there about the fire truck, but I just had a question. If it's only like one way in and one way out, if there was a fire and you have, you know, 60 parking spaces up there, how could people get in and out in an emergency? And then, you know, you can't even get the fire equipment in.
I think our Fire Marshal expressed some concern about that and that's an element that has to be resolved prior to this approval.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Before we go to Commissioner comments, I thank you all so much for being here. We're all residents of Peters Township. I don't think that any of us are taking your concerns lightly. We're doing our best up here. I encourage you to continue to come to our meetings. It's a great time being with you all. We'll continue to talk about traffic. With that, any other Commissioner comments? I do believe the applicant has requested a table at this time. So hearing that, we have a motion.
Sure. I move that we table the 3836 Washington Road Development Plan.
Second round?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mark, we're moving on to staff update.
Don't have too much to note in terms of the staff update. We did have a steering committee meeting.
On your way out, if you could just keep it a little hushed so we can continue business, I thank you so much for it.
So we did have a steering committee meeting for the comprehensive plan last Tuesday. Have Rochelle and Mr. Waldinger attended. We talked about future land use maps, talked about future themes within the plan itself. We will continue that discussion in two months. The second meeting in January, or second Tuesday in January, I should say. And then we'll discuss more items as it relates to both the future land use and the themes and goals and objectives for the steering, for the comprehensive plan.
You're still going to send that document for our comments?
Yes, I have it. I just haven't sent it out yet. I apologize. I got it yesterday, was off and we'll get it.
We should have like a month's worth of time for us to review, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.